Okay.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Executive Committee meeting of the Calbright College on Wednesday, February 22, 2023. With that, can I ask the board?
I think she was calling for the role.
Okay, all right. Good morning and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/Board. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. And I'm sorry, I'm having network issues, but were you able to call the role?
No, I did not call the role yet. Hildegarde Aguinaldo. Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Present.
Pam Haynes here. Jennifer Perry.
Here.
And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum. President Costa.
Great, thanks so much, Terry. With that, I'd like to ask my colleague, Board Member Perry, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If anyone placed their hand over their heart, and per our earlier discussion, if we could place a bit of emphasis on the word indivisible. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Board Member Perry. With that, we're on item 1.3, which is the Order of Agenda. Colleagues, does anybody have any comments or request any changes to the order of the agenda today? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So with that, we go on to my report, and I will keep it just very brief, which is that, you know, I think we've all noticed in the news lately, at least those of us in the Bay Area, that the tech companies have been constraining. And so I'm usually kind of a pessimist, and I think we've been potentially in a recession for a while, and I think it just makes the work of Calbright all that more important. Before COVID, before kind of this economic blip, we had a lot of people in state who were looking for a pathway to higher-earning jobs, a better career trajectory. And when we have these, you know, constraints in the labor market or in the broader economy, Calbright offers a very real opportunity for people who have lives, who are already in their working life, to try and train themselves and educate themselves in an alternative pathway. And so I was just reminded as we see some of these tech layoffs, and, you know, hopefully they are not signaling kind of a broader issue in the economy, that I'm so very proud of the work of Calbright, and I'm so incredibly thankful that we have it in existence now, because we haven't always had such an easy pathway for individuals who are looking to support their families in a more meaningful way. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees and Executive Committee. If you remember, in my opening remarks from last month's meeting, I referenced a couple of statistics pertaining to student success, which I'd like to explore further with you all this morning. Now that Calbright has been open for enrollment for a few years, we have a large enough sample size to generate meaningful quarter-over-quarter statistics that provide insight into the power of our unique model. One of the first things I did when I began my presidency was implement the structure of a six-month term for our students. This was critical not only to provide parameters for students and formalize their relationship with the college, but the policy is also a key enrollment management process that allows us to cohort students by the quarter of their enrollment, and then to really follow their progress across the student journey. At Calbright, like across other community colleges in the system, we define persistence as the number of students who either complete their program during the first term or move into a subsequent term. For our earliest cohorts of learners who entered Calbright following the establishment of the new enrollment protocols, their persistence rate hovered around roughly the low 70s. And while it's notably higher than the state and national metrics for adult learners, we know that students who experience success early are more likely to complete their programs. And we know that we need to balance progression timeframes with the realities of our students' lives, which need support, but also time and flexibility. In the spring of 2021, we began intentionally building our student support team and diving back into the student journey. We needed to immerse ourselves in how students experience Calbright, and also to measure the success of intervention models and support endeavors. What we've seen is that as the team has expanded and had the opportunity to launch their own responsive initiatives, there's been a direct connection to persistence. And today, this has been the case, and this has been the case since the summer of 2021, roughly 95% of our students either finished their program during the first term or successfully moved to their next term. But we also see this in the bigger trends. We see that we awarded more than double the number of certificates in 2022 versus 2021, that many in our Salesforce Administration Program, for example, increased the pace of their completion, completing their program in a little more than seven months over the course of 2021, and today, many completing in a little more than four months. That attendance at Career Services Workshops and participation in other support events are also at an all-time high. And all of this happened while we more than tripled our enrollment between July 2021 and today. And we did this holding strong on actually reaching the communities the college is designed to serve. It's a hard truth that higher education does not serve adult learners well, especially our population of adult learners. Many of them have been away from formal education for long periods of time. They're working or unemployed, raising a family, dealing with the continued impact of a global pandemic that's still affecting their economic realities, not to mention the school schedules, the childcare, the eldercare. Across the community college system, the persistence rate for Calbright's population of learners is roughly 50%, and the completion rate less than 5%, not unlike what we see nationally. While we still have work to do and will continue to learn and improve, these early metrics point to the efficacy of our model within the context of the learners we serve and relative to the system overall. They also point toward our role as the leading edge of the learning curve for serving adult learners. And most importantly, they point towards success for our students, who are taking a risk by coming back to higher education in order to build a better life for themselves and their families. As a college, we've never been in a better position. And looking at the year ahead, an area of focus will be taking these lessons and packaging them into reports and presentations that can be shared across the higher education system, across our community colleges. We'll weave these improvements into our next strategic vision planning process. We're going to lean more into our student-focused design, and we're going to continue to serve as a laboratory for innovation to identify solutions to these shared challenges and to the complex equation of serving adult learners well. Before I turn things back over to President Costa, I also wanted to celebrate something of an important milestone for the college. We are very excited to announce the results of our first election for the Calbright College Student Body Organization. The elections concluded on January 31, and Jeremy Cox was elected president. His first order of business, unsurprisingly, was working to get even more student volunteers to fill the rest of the student government positions. We also have elected as vice president Makala Hiriyana. And this historic moment for college, and it's a historic moment for Calbright and its student body, because it provides our students with another opportunity to self-advocate, but also because as we further seek to build a stronger student community and deeper engagement with the college, we want to do it in ways that also provide leadership opportunities and skills that are transferable to the career aspirations of our students. I want to start by formally congratulating our new student leaders. We look forward to seeing our leaders provide the Board of Trustees with regular updates through constituency reports. And with that, I'd like to thank you, President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. What a wonderful note to kind of end your comments on. That's wonderful. Congratulations. With that, we are now going to move into closed session. We have one item, and we expect that we'll return in about 30 minutes. With that, colleagues, I will see you in closed session. Thank you. The board is now back from closed session. We did not take any action in closed session. So with that, we will move on to our consent agenda, which is in Section 3. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks so much, Terry. With that, Board members, I will take a motion in a second on the consent items.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda. This is member Grande.
Oh, seconds. Oh, sorry, Pam. I see Pam second.
I would say I heard Grande and Haynes, but we'll get you on the next one, Perry. With that, can you call the role, please?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thanks so much. With that, we will move on to the action portion of our agenda. So we're in Section 4. We will start with item 4.1, the Junior Developer Program Course Outlines of Record for Six Courses.
All right. Hello, I'm Shannon McCarty. I'm Vice President for Learning and Instruction, and I'm going to be presenting the Programs of Record today. So President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board, I'm seeking board approval for three new programs. And these programs do represent a really important milestone, and we are keeping on track to meet our July 1 statutory deadline. And while reviewing these programs, you may have noted a predominant theme, which is really related to technology careers. And as we look forward to program planning, identification, and portfolio development, you're going to note that our programs will start to fall under like larger domains, occupational clusters, or one might even say optimized guided pathways. So when offering competency-based education, leveraging these occupational clusters will help us promote student flexibility and program relevancy. These clusters allow us to have a woven and integrated skills across programs, which can then be personalized to student interests, prior experiences, and even career choices. So for Calbright, our chosen programs, it will be essential to start to unbundle programs and courses to a common denominator, and that's skills. So as we continue to build our skills inventory, we'll also be building out our assessment-forward approach to learning. And so the occupational clusters that are being presented today, it's just one step towards actualizing on our future vision. So the first of the three programs is the Full Stack Junior Developer Program, which is presented with six Course Outlines of Records, or CORs. They were developed in collaboration with one of our full-time faculty members. And this program really is a perfect example of how we are developing integrated programs. This program not only focuses on full-stack development outcomes, but has integrated skills from our UX and UI program and project management programs. We also are seeking approval for the user experience, user interface, or UX/UI curriculum. This curriculum is composed of three core CORs, and they were developed by leveraging external industry subject matter expert. And the final program is the project management curriculum. Once again, we leveraged an industry expert to develop the three core CORs. All CORs have been reviewed by Calbright's Advisory Board, both the Technology and Business Councils. They provided thoughtful input on the curriculum. These suggestions were then integrated into the CORs and have been approved by our internal curriculum committee through the process. So I am here today seeking approval for the three program curriculum outlines of record.
Thanks so much for the presentation, Shannon. Appreciate it. Is there any trustee discussion on the item? Oh, I see a board member Grande has her hand raised.
Thank you, President Costa, and thank you very much for bringing these for our consideration today. The background information that's provided has been incredible in terms of the number of available jobs and the growth opportunities. The one thing that I'm very interested in, though, is where this paths to on the credit side. And I was just wondering if there had been any conversations with receiving institutions within our community college system about where students finishing these certificates and courses would land on the credit side, and what those opportunities may be.
Yeah, for these specific pathways, they could absolutely articulate to four-credit institutions, either our partnering community colleges or any other universities or colleges. So as we're building out kind of that thoughtful collection of the courses, we also do a lot of being very specific and intentional when we're looking at our credit hours and making sure that we would meet those contact hours. So then students could path on to any four-credit opportunities.
Do we have any idea as to what those four-credit opportunities are? Are they associate degree for transfers in particular disciplines? Are they locally awarded associate degrees? What additional opportunities do students completing these programs have on the articulated credit side? If you know. If you don't, I'm just interested.
I'd love to helicopter up and maybe walk you through a little bit of process related to how we approached it with the, some of the existing programs that we have, and give you an indication. These programs are actually quite differentiated in a few different ways, but it's a, your question is a great segue into how we might see the future of the portability of the learning here in Calbright and how it translates to other opportunities in the higher education market for further scaling and advancement. So one is, one I will just start off by saying, in the IT and the cyber cases, the, those, CRM, I can't remember now, one of the two. Shannon, you should keep me correct on this. But what we, what we work to do is to actually articulate those into well-established programs at Compton College and at Bakersfield College. Those are two institutions that are really excited about the opportunity to understand how to collect especially folks who are locally now entering the higher education market into their programs. And so that's a pretty extensive process with those receiving institutions to work towards understanding how it best articulate. In the case of Compton College, Compton has articulated into the four-year market as well. And so it allows them to transfer those learnings into progression into the programs that lead to transferable opportunities in the CSU system, for example. But as you know, we don't always, we can do our best design with an understanding of what those requirements at receiving institutions might be. I think the point that you make is also very well taken as we're thinking about it in the context of the broader 60-credit set that is an associate's degree for transfer to kind of maximize the value of the skills and the credentials and the ability to articulate them through credit for prior learning or other opportunities at other institutions. But mostly, it will require us working together to experiment with the best ways to do this with our receiving institution. So I think we're learning a lot from the work that we're doing with Compton and Bakersfield, but, but we'll have to do that in the program implementation phase, and this is kind of stage one. We can structure the programs to maximize what we think will be the translation to the skills and credentials that'll be acquired here with potential receiving institutions. But the act of actually moving into that articulation space more comprehensively really requires partner institutions.
Is there any partnering that's going on during the curriculum development between what we will be articulating to? So Compton College, Bakersfield College, are they there during the actual design phase so that it will streamline the articulation that will take place in the future?
I don't, I wouldn't view that as a streamlining opportunity. I think we are quite observant of their internal processes for curriculum and for approval, as well as for the articulation of credit. So I think it's most important that we understand the processes at receiving institutions for validating learning that occurs outside of the institution. And that's kind of, those are the kind of frameworks that are best understood at receiving institutions that are potential partners.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information. When we were here on my local campus, developing a non-credit-to-credit pathway, all of the interested parties had their fingers in the mix, if you will, making sure that we didn't have to keep going back to the drawing board to fix any articulation discrepancies. So I was just wondering if we're doing something similar with our students in goal in mind. Just wondering. Thank you.
Thanks, Board Member Grande. Any other comments, colleagues? I'm kind of scrolling through here to see if there's any other hands raised. I don't see any. I have just a quick question, and I don't know if it's for Shannon or a GDA, but at the top, I was kind of talking about, you know, we're in a very dynamic kind of economy right now. And I know that you have kind of multiple lenses that you look at when we develop these courses of record, and some of them is skill transfer, transferability, right, across kind of different industries. How do you kind of keep on top of all of these changes that seem to be happening kind of in real time?
There's, it's an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of analytical work, and you will probably also notice that a couple of the positions that you approved in the consent agenda also lend themselves to that level of increasing research requirement that we need in terms of staying on top of labor market trends. But, you know, and I think that there's no easy answer to do it. I think there's a very comprehensive set of methodologies that we use to try to keep in top of it, which balance what is accessible to us in terms of available labor market data, whether it's TMZ or Burning Glass or some of the, or now the combined TMZ-Burning-Glass entity. We are on top of the EDD data. We also dig a lot into where the regional planning data sits. And so part of our outreach efforts and our engagement with regions involves us coming to understand what are the economic development strategies for and plans for industries within those areas to get a better and deeper understanding of regional contextual labor market. But the last thing that's seeming even more frontier boundary that we've spent a lot more time is actually how we both leverage the traditional councils that exist to validate our curriculum. Those are also partners and individuals in those industries that help us understand more about the market itself, and the market changes themselves. And so if we combine that with some of the prior work we've done and some of the formative aspects of other programs, where we want to get deeper in the research is actually understanding what better conditions hiring in the hiring market itself. And that's less observable in the private sector market, in the private market, unsurprisingly. But it is quite visible when we look at the public sector hiring market, which are often leading employers in underserved regions of the state. And so we are also beginning to explore relationships with local entities, including city, county, local, and state, around those types of hiring requirements in the public sector, which are observable and which can help us understand not just how to align our programs, but how to think about how to best position our students for landing opportunities in that kind of a market.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I see Board Member Haynes has her hand raised.
Thank you. I just want to commend staff for these three programs that we're going to be hopefully approving all of them today. I'm wondering, to piggyback on what trustee Grande said, how do we? And I heard the nuance in one, her question, but also in your response. We have two, we have two partners in Compton and in Bakersfield. And so, and, and so that's two out of 115 partners that we potentially could have. How do we, how do we push, without partnership, how do we push out some of the best things that are happening at Calbright? What are the strategies around that, the dissemination of the work that you're doing to our colleagues, our brothers and sisters, relative in terms of our colleges? Or is it, are we not at a place where there is enough receptivity relative to the colleges that we're just not quite ready? Or, and let me, let me just say this. And as we move forward in this year and increase our, increase our numbers, and we will indeed do that, will that be enough for someone to sort of, some of our colleges to stop and think, well, maybe we should be doing something slightly differently?
Well, I won't presume to predict the behavior of other colleges, but I would speak a little bit to our efforts to build and share across the institutions. I mean, it is no secret that many colleges are really hurting on the enrollment side. And that's been the area where our lessons have been particularly assistive in areas where we have found ways to reduce the friction of entering an institution. So on the enrollment management side, Tamika and Brendan, Tamika and Brendan's team have been very engaged on the, with folks who are on the enrollment management side to talk about ways in which you authentically create the relationship with prospective students, especially from some of the communities that we're talking about, how to best optimize your website in order to drive the traffic, and how to do the data collection that you do before we get to what has been a black box in CCC Apply and then the high degree of difficulty that students have, especially from the communities that we're talking about in navigating through that application, something we've previously discussed. So there's already a lot of sharing and learning that is happening. And I think the more, the more we start to see results and outcomes, the more receptive folks who are really committed and interested in solving some of these challenges that we faced together for so many years are likely. And so we do get a lot of questions, and we do a lot of response and sharing with respect to that. There's nothing that we're doing that, that we aren't excited or happy to share. And I think what has been interesting is a lot of our, you know, our approaches and our learning has also been of interest in the traditional workforce side of things. So a lot of our engagement and efforts to do work there have, those have really resonated with folks who are very focused, not just on a completion outcome, but also on a workforce outcome. And so we also, you know, the sort of approaches that we take and the efforts that we make to not just share our learnings, but to kind of build, build joint learnings together. It extends just beyond traditional institutions, and it's important that it does because it's actually usually a larger table in a community that's trying to solve a complex set of economic challenges, you know, workforce development challenges, educational opportunity challenges. They, community members don't sit neatly in the silos that the systems have defined for which they receive opportunity or service. And so I think there's, there's a lot ahead that we're, you know, happy to continue to share and to disseminate, much like we found ways to do in very practical opportunities through enrollment management. But I think there's, there's just, there's plenty of, there's many more avenues where we can continue to provide those learnings. I think the thing is, you know, there is so much more for us to do in the expansion and the deepening of the work of the college, that the, as the numbers go up, as we get more reliable data points in the measurement of the approaches that we're taking on, the greater efficacy we can, efficacy that we can demonstrate, the easier it will be for all of those learnings to transfer in more organic fashion, right? We already see, you know, different parts of our team being reached out to at the college with peers or colleagues in the system, and I just see that growing and continuing in a really, in a really healthy way, particularly with those folks who are really committed to trying to figure some of this out and are struggling with it themselves.
Thank you so much for that response. We're going to, we're going to let the data speak for itself.
Thanks, Pam. I would like our board liaison to know that Board Member Aguinaldo has joined, so that her presence is noted in the record. Shannon, I appreciate that you were expeditious in that you bundled together a couple of the items, but board members, we're going to take them separately to mirror what's in the agenda itself, because I want to make sure and provide ample time for the public to comment. With that, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment on item 4.1, the Junior Developer Program Course Outlines of Record for Six Courses.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Thank you. With that, board members, I will entertain a motion in a second on item 4.1.
I'll move approval. This is member Grande. This is for item 4.1.
I'll second.
Bill, Jennifer beat you to the punch. I saw it. You guys got to be, you know, really on it. With that, board liaison, can you please call the role?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande. Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you. Board members, I'm going to assume that you don't have comments on the following two items that we kind of addressed it in concert with Shannon's presentation. Let me know if that's otherwise, but I do want to call for a public comment on item 4.2, which is the User Experience User Interface Program Course Outlines of Record for Four Courses.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right. Who's going to be quick on the draw, board members, with that motion and the second?
I'll move to approve.
Haynes, seconds. All right. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next, we have item 4.3, Project Management Program Course Outlines of Record for Three Courses. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. With that, members, I will entertain a motion and a second.
Haynes moves, please.
I'll second. Rawlings.
With that, can you call the roll, please?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. That brings us to our last item on our action portion of the agenda, item 4.4, Vice President of Student Services and Success Amendments. With that, Joseph, do you want to kick us off?
You bet. Thank you. Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the board. This is an amendment to revise the terms of employment for the Vice President of Student Success from full-time to part-time for a limited duration period prior to his resignation. The Employment Offer Letter is revised to reflect a part-time schedule from March 20th through June 30th, 2023. The request follows a transitionary period pending the Vice President's resignation effective June 30th, 2023. The Vice President anticipates transitioning to a part-time schedule on March 20th. However, for personal reasons, may be able to work full-time for a few weeks, additional weeks if possible. With the board's approval, we can accommodate his request to transition to part-time as needed from March 20th through June 30th, 2023. Making this modification to his employment will allow for a smooth transition of the department and provide stability across the organization. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for the presentation, colleagues. Any questions or comments regarding this item? I have one from Board Member Grande.
Thank you, President Costa. Will we be seeking recruitment for this position simultaneous with the change in the contract? And do we anticipate that we will have someone hired in this position before July 1st, so that there will be some overlap and availability of training? Or will we have the opportunity potentially to convince Ted to come back in a consulting model so that he can help whoever replaces that position get up to speed?
There are many possibilities, obviously, in this. And of course, our goal is going to be to recruit and hire as soon as we can. And we want to find the right highly qualified position. They'll have the shoes to fill. And so providing some overlap would be great. If not, we can talk about options and ways that maybe Ted can assist in, in something in the future to help us to bring that person on board. But we're going to be working diligently to find that next great leader for this department.
Thanks. Next, I have Board Member Epstein, followed by Board Member Haynes. You're muted, Tom. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to give my best to Ted. I thought you did an outstanding job. The presentations paid us, and hopefully we'll have a nice new transition and be able to find someone as good as him on the next round. So, but appreciate all the work you did, Ted.
Thanks. With that, we'll go to Board Member Haynes next. Thanks.
I wanted to say the same thing, Ted. You've been fabulous. You've been the inspiration to make certain that our students have voice. And I just appreciate you.
I was going to say, say it ain't so, Joe. I mean, but obviously, it's such a key position in the college. Yeah, I just want to join my colleagues in saying that you've just been absolutely amazing. And so it's, it's with heavy heart that we're doing this, I guess. I guess if this is what you want, Ted, we'll do it. With that, I don't see any other colleagues with their hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
I mean, maybe Ted has something he wants to say. Would that be appropriate?
He is a member of the public. He certainly could, yes.
I thank you all, and absolutely, I'm open to doing whatever I can to help the transition because this, this college means a lot. Our mission means a lot. And, you know, our students mean a lot to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And lastly, just, I wanted to particularly thank Ted for his generosity and in giving us some extended time, in particular, to make sure that we had the least disruption possible for our efforts and for our student, that he's been so instrumental in advancing. And I don't, I won't say my goodbyes now, so. But I will just express my thanks for giving us the time to do this in a really supported and organized way.
Yes, thank you. Board members, are you going to fight for this motion? Probably not. No one wants to make this motion.
I will. So I will, Haynes will reluctantly move this item, only because we'll have Ted a little bit longer.
I'll second it then. Keep him a little longer. I'll keep it.
All right. We got the, the motion and the second. With that, Terry, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
A reluctant aye, but we'll do it.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
You forgot me.
Oh, we forgot.
I'm so sorry, Jennifer.
All right. My vote is fine then. Yes. You can record the yes.
Great. With that, I think the motion carries. Next, colleagues, we're going to move on to our information reports items. We have Ms. Johnson up with item 5.1, which is the 2023 Legislative and Budget Update.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, Executive Board of Trustees, Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations. As all of you know, it's that time of year again for all things budget and policy discussions and debate in Sacramento. I'll begin my update starting with Governor Newsom's proposed budget. I'm pleased to share that the governor once again included full funding for Calbright College. And we appreciate Governor Newsom and his administration's continued support for seeing our value at the, in the state. The Calbright team has been part of and is currently in conversations with a number of state agencies about workforce needs and where Calbright might be a resource for them and meeting their targeted needs and outcomes. Of course, the budget is ultimately created by both the governor and the state legislature, and all of, all of whom have opinions on the state's budget, and rightfully so. We're excited about the opportunity to meet with and returning and newly elected members of the state legislature, one-third of whom are recently elected, 42% of whom are women. Last night, I attended California Women Leeds Reception, celebrating a large number of female elected officials. And it was inspiring to see so many women from both sides of the political aisle, representing various regions of our great state. To date, we have met with staff from the Assembly and Senate Budget Subcommittee on Education, the Assembly and Senate Committee on Education, the Department of Finance, as well as a number of members serving, serving on both the Education Budget and Policy Committees. It's a very busy time. And while investment priorities remain high in education and workforce development, this year's proposed budget is different from years prior. Governor Newsom expects general fund revenues to be billions lower than at the 2022 Budget Act projections. I share this information with you because we should anticipate scrutiny on all publicly funded programs, including higher education, before the state looks to make further investments. At the same time, the governor and legislature are eager to hear from higher ed institutions about what's working and why it's working. Alternatively, what's not working, but how are you troubleshooting? A recurring theme of late with elected officials and staff is the topic of declining enrollment across the higher education segments and strategies to remove impediments so students can more quickly matriculate through their respective programs. Given our numbers of late and the strategies we've created and implemented, we're admittedly excited about speaking to this topic. But we temper it with humility because we know this work is hard, and we follow the model of continuous improvement. So what are the next steps for the team? While President Menon is tentatively scheduled to present at the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education hearing on Tuesday, April 14th, she's also joined our team for meetings with newly appointed education leadership, and will continue to join us for key meetings. By then, we'll have met with every member serving on the Budget Subcommittee. And given all of the great work being led across the college, we're excited and eager to dialogue with members about this upcoming hearing. And regarding legislation, I'm happy to report that there is currently no existing legislation to close down Calbright College. I want to repeat that. There's no legislation as of Friday's deadline. And for that, I want to thank everybody at the college because it's such a team effort. So everybody at Calbright that, on the respective teams, as well as all of you on the Executive Board of Trustees, as well as the entire Board of Trustees for being an advocate in your day-to-day conversations. This is huge, and we have a lot of work to do. But we have so much narrative to share. And again, it's just a collective thank you for everybody's assistance and all the work we've done. So if there are any questions, I stand ready to answer. Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Thanks so much for the presentation. I see Board Member Perry has her hand raised.
No questions, but I think I expressed the feelings of this whole board, the work that went into full funding and no legislation, wishing for Calbright's demise. This is a huge milestone, and it shows that all credit goes to all of you, Ajita and everybody, for fighting a long battle. And with the work you've done, proving how significant and important the role Calbright plays in educating the workforce, the potential workforce in California. So just a giant round of applause for all of you.
Thanks so much. We all incur with that, compared to Ajita.
I also, none of this would really be possible without this incredible board that we have. And so I just want to reflect back the thanks to, to the, to the amazing board and the champions that you all are for this work and for the students that we're serving. So please, on behalf of the Calbright team, also, I just wanted to, to express my, my thank you because I think all of that contributed to this.
I had just a quick question based, and you kind of intimated this in your presentation, but obviously, a lot of new members, just as, you know, one of the largest turnovers in legislative history. So clearly, you're, you're reaching out, relevant, but kind of tell us a little bit more about your outreach because that's, that's a lot of people.
No, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say it's, it's a lot. So we're a team of three, and our lobbyist is Gareth Elliott. And we are dividing and conquering. So it's a combination of Ajita coming out regularly from San Francisco to meet with the new chairs and vice chairs of Education and the Budget Subcommittee, meeting new members, but we know we have to be tactical about this. So we're dividing and conquering. So there might be Jessica and Danny leading a meeting with Ajita, and I might be taking another meeting. Gareth will be staffing another one. But we will be at the Capitol, or the swing space, as we call it, every week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays from here out until May revise. And so we will, we'll be at the, we'll be there regularly. And so for formal meetings and informal, we know folks are busy. And so scheduling has been a bit challenging, but we will pretty much be there, President Costa, on a regular basis for at least two days of the, of the week now until May revise.
Great. Thank you so much.
We've learned the Amtrak schedule really well.
Yes, exactly. With that, I see Board Member Haynes has her hand raised.
Just a question. I know how, how professional the team is. I just want to, are you, do you have a profile before you walk into that intro with member or with staff to know whether or not the, the new members have any experience relative to either community colleges or education in general? Did they, have they served on a board of, of some sort?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm so glad you asked, Member Haynes. What we, what we've done is I really want to give props to Danny May and Jessica on my team. They create face sheets for every legislator. So I'll use an example. We had an opportunity, Ajita and I, with Michael Younger, to meet with the new Chair of Assembly Higher Ed, Member Fong, and we do the short bio on them about having his, having served on the community college, his interest in workforce development. And we really try to see what are their legislative priorities and how we can tap into that. If they're not alternatively on Education Committee, we still want to know, is healthcare an issue? What we think about our LVM program? Or, you know, to, oh gosh, Shannon's excellent presentation about our new programs. Are any of those resonating for them? We try to align and connect the dots as much as possible. And again, if it's, if we still struggle, we just unpack it and say, what are you interested in? How can we collaborate? What does that look like?
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I'm really glad that you mentioned workforce because that can be an open door to why Calbright is just so critically important. So thanks so much for all your work, Jenny.
Thanks so much. Any other board comments? Not seeing any, any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Next, we have item 5.2, good, good segue here into the second quarter, 2023 Budget Update.
Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the rest of the Board of Trustees. This presentation will cover the Q2 2023 financial results and an update of our current spend and projected year-end results. Next slide, please. The agenda for today's meeting will include a Calbright overview, an update of the financial results for Q2 of fiscal year 2022, 2023, and finally, our next steps. Next slide, please. Calbright overview, next slide, please. The Calbright overview includes the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget, which represents the strategic vision for 2023, and is based on an explicit assumption of flat annual funding of $15 million per year and the carryover of one-time funds of approximately 71.7 million remaining from the previous year. Additionally, the overall budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 sets ambitious goals to drive towards a new phase of high-quality growth. Also, Calbright College has developed and already has begun implementing a robust implementation plan covering January 2021 through December 2025. Next slide, please. Q2 2023 Financial Results, next slide, please. This slide and the next two slides have a slightly different format from previous years in that we're showing each quarter's results separately and comparing, contrasting between the two quarters. If you go down the Q2 results for the unrestricted fund 11 accounts, we note that 2.85 billion was drawn down in Q2 versus Q1's 4.2 million. One thing to know is that for miscellaneous revenues for both Fund 11 and Fund 12, unrestricted funds and restricted funds respectively, is primarily composed of interest revenue gained in the quarter. As of the date of this report, we have not received the actual interest income recorded by Solano County for the unrestricted and restricted accounts. We could have alternatively recorded an average amount based on the last several quarters of Solano County interest, but decided to be conservative and leave the amount out of our financial results until we get an official notice. Once the official notice is received, we will adjust the Q2 results. Going further down the Q2 expenses. Going further down the Q2 expenses, the major increases include, per the budget assumptions, we had several new hires which were categorized under the non-academic salaries, which explains the slight increase quarter over quarter. All other quarter two expenses approximately the Q1 expenses except for operating expenses. The big items in, that represent the 360,000 are primarily 200,000 for the Bitwise Apprenticeship Program, with the balance being for IT support and staff development opportunities. Going further to the right, the balance remaining column is just simply the adopted budget less the Q1 and Q2 results. Going further to the right, the year-end projected balance, we base that number based on the projection of the first half results being representative of second half of the year. But we'll continue to adjust as we advance into the next quarter. With hiring trends continue to being strong, we anticipate that second half personnel cost to be higher than the first half of the results and spending to be on track against our authorized budget. Next slide, please. For the restricted funds in Q2, under miscellaneous revenues, as I mentioned earlier, we will make an adjustment to the miscellaneous revenues in a subsequent quarter following official notice from Solano County. That's why you see the difference of of only 35,000 versus Q1's amount of 215,000. Going further down the expense column, mostly the expenses are approximately Q1's numbers except for the operating expense and capital outlay. Operating expenses increased approximately 27% quarter over quarter due primarily to digital ad buys, IT step, temp staff, and tech certification programs. The capital outlay of 54,000, it represents primarily technology-related investments supporting staff and students. Next slide, please. This represents the combined funds. This slide shows the combined funds of Fund 11 and Fund 12, unrestricted and restricted funds. If you look under the year-end projected column, our aggressive hiring stance for the academic salaries is projected to be approximately 80% of the budget, while our hiring of non-academic salaries has been a little bit slower at 55% of our budgeted annual total. For capital outlay, the major expense, if you'll remember, our budget was primarily for headquarters and related charges. Due to the time involved in reviewing potential office vacant space, this cost will likely be realized in the next fiscal year rather than the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. So for next steps, our staff is working with Calbright auditors for the fiscal year 2021, 22 audit and close. And our quarterly fiscal reports will continue to be presented to the board through the remainder of fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 22-23. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm a budget nerd and that was a really great presentation. Board members, any questions or comments on our budget presentation? I see Board Member Haines has her hand raised.
So thank you so much for the presentation. I guess I have two questions. Well, one commendation, and that is I really like that you had for many of those categories, what the percentage of the budget they represented, which was very helpful for me particularly. The question that I have is, in the presentation, we talked about, or you talked about capital outlay. And I just want to make certain that I have oriented myself relative to that. Much of my thinking around capital outlay has always been about buildings and the equipment of materials to to furnish the the buildings. But should I be thinking, or should we be thinking about capital outlay beyond that relative to the the internal infrastructure of the technology that we actually need in order to run this one? We're not, we're not housing students in the way we typically do. So can you just share some of the elements of outlay that are sort of non-traditional or aren't always, maybe they are traditional, but we don't think of them as such?
Sure. Primarily, when I looked at the budget in regards to capital outlay, it really concentrated more on the infrastructure in regards to potentially when we find an office space and all the related costs to that, all the tenant improvements, all the the desk chairs, office equipment, things of that nature. So that's primarily what that is about in regards to the capital outlay. I mean, I'm not sure if any other board member or any other members have further insight, but that's primarily what those capital outlay expenses are.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I see Board Member Epstein.
Yes, thanks. I just was curious. I mean, our original budget estimated total expenses to be 48 million and we're only spending 18 million. And so I'd just like an explanation of how that happened and what that means for the future.
Well, I think in a lot of ways, some of the expenses that was originally budgeted, we, one of the big drivers was definitely, we anticipated a lot of legal expenses. A lot of dealing with F3 and other firms in regards to our legal expense. As you know, we've hired in-house counsel and so we are assuming that a lot of that potential cost will be answered by in-house counsel or that a lot of those costs will be very mitigated in regards to the use of outside counsel. So that's definitely one of the issues that we're looking at to see whether or not that level of expenses will continue. Some of the other major drivers I touched upon, a big part of the budget was the capital outlay regarding the headquarters and that, as I mentioned earlier, will probably be incurred in the next fiscal year. So that's another big part of the overall expense. We also had a great deal of expense budgeted for consultants and their use. And as time goes on and we're hiring a lot more of the these resources in-house, we won't be utilizing a lot of that contractor expense. And if I remember correctly, the contractor expense budget was north of $5 million. So we have looked at whether or not we can take that type of expertise in-house as opposed to paying for a lot of the
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done. I just did want to take a step back for a second because I think it sounded like, Tom, the question you were asking her, sort of what felt, what felt different than our expectations for the current budget year? One thing that I do think is important is these are, these are just Q1 and Q2, so just about halfway through the fiscal year. And sometimes it is also a virtue of when the actual expenditure falls and whether that closes, falls closer to the end of the fiscal year. So what has also happened at this time is that we are seeing both increased costs associated with the increasing enrollments that we are experiencing in this cadence in the spring of this fiscal year, as well as additional costs associated with staffing that are likely to fill out a good portion of what we anticipate will be the full budget costs for the fiscal year in line with what the board has authorized.
The other issue, Tom, that I would raise, and Ange, you should feel free to speak to this. I did this for Alameda County. Q1 is notably unreliable in most public sector kind of projections. And Ange, you kind of intimated that, that you're seeing an uptick in expenditures in Q2. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, primarily the major upticks is really in regards to our ability to hire staff, both from an academic and non-academic level. Our momentum is, and Joe can talk to this much more fully. We've really been able to hone in and attract the right people. And really, in the second half of this year, I think that that trend of really targeting and finding the right people will continue and definitely surpass what we did in the Q1.
Yeah, in spite of the Q1, Q2 issue, but we still have a year-end projected that I assume takes into account that sometimes expenditures are lower in the first two quarters. And so I'm not sure I still understand. I mean,
Yeah, I think you're asking a question about the rough estimation that we did to reach the projections.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, but I mean, assuming your year-end projected is relatively accurate. You know, that gives us an extra $30 million to play with. Not to play with, but to spend on important programs. And how does that, I just want to know how that affects the long-term planning and also the short-term enrollment and everything. I mean, it's just, it's a big variance. And so what changed between when we projected this budget and now?
I mean, I'll have Ange address the latter, but I did just want to point out one thing, which is I think in Ange's comments, he referenced the fact that there was an estimation done for the projected spending for the end of the fiscal year, but that we'd want to adjust in quarter three. And that quarter three will provide a much more reliable projection through the end of the fiscal year. So he kind of described his methodology and process for coming with the projections, but the refinement of the projections should come.
I would just say, Tom, when I was at the county, we didn't even really, quarter one is so inaccurate. You don't even really like, I think it will be much more interesting to look at Q3 to see where we are against the spend because Q1 are very unreliable. And it sounds like we're having some uptick in Q2. And I think when we see Q3, you're not going to see that projection at the year end. And that has to do with a lot of things. And I don't know if Joe is still on. That can include things like what's our average hiring timeframe? You know, at the county, like it took us up to 90 days to bring somebody on board. And so sometimes to Ajita's point, that'll bleed into other quarters. Ange, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, or Tom, if you feel like that.
I'm not sure if I can. Well, definitely, I do know that in the most recent period, we have done a very aggressive campaign in regards to hiring some of the the IT roles that are still to be had with the college. And from my understanding, we're getting close to potentially hiring some of these people. So I definitely know that for the non-academic roles, we're definitely going to see a larger uptick in regards to expense. And so it remains to be seen toward the second half of the year, but I I really feel that for the non-academic salaries, we're going to see a much larger amount. At least that's my estimation at this point.
You know what might be helpful, Ange, is we don't have a lot of history here yet as a relatively new organization, but it might be interesting if you can look at some of the variants in the past that we've experienced between Q1 to Q3. Because, you know, my experience is, but it might be helpful for the board to see this, is that there is a large variance that I don't know why this is, like Q4 is usually explosive as people try and really like finish out the year. But it might be helpful if you can just report back to the board kind of what those variances look like historically. And I would say our first year is probably not a great indication as we were kind of getting ourselves started, but it might help you kind of see the pattern there a little bit more.
Will do.
Tom, did you have another comment? It looked like you were gonna.
Well, it's just, you know, I guess I'm used to to seeing budgets where if there's a projection, even if it's at mid-year and that they're anticipating like more spending in the third and fourth quarters as opposed to the lower level. And so I mean, I'm happy to wait till Q3 and see what happens, but I would like to, it seems pretty clear we're going to have some money. We're not going to spend as much money as our original budget. And so how that affects our, both our outcomes and our planning, I think I'd be interested to hear about next quarter.
Great, thanks. I'm just scrolling here. Any other board member comments? Not seeing any hands raised. With that, do we have any public comment?
There was no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. And you are up again next on item five point three, our reports on contracts and purchases.
Right. Thank you, President Costa. Yes, our contracts executed was approximately 2.4 million in total. And our purchases was approximately $33,000 for the January timeframe.
Thanks so much. Board members, any comments or questions on this item? Not see any hands raised. With that, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Thanks so much. Next, we move to Shannon with item five point four, Labor Market Insights, HR Talent Acquisition and Learning Development.
Wonderful. And President Costa, President, our Vice President Aguanado and members of the board, hello again, and now good afternoon. I have the honor of introducing this topic and also our presenter. So as we are continuing to do our research and select and develop programs in alignment with workforce-driven equity-centered community design framework, which was shared last March, we're committed to providing the board with a preview of our research and findings for, towards our program selection. So today, I'm very excited to introduce you to Bindo. She's the Director of Research, Data Strategy and Effectiveness with the Workforce Strategy and Innovation Team. Ben's going to provide a preview of the Labor Market Insights, supporting our intention to develop two new programs. One, Human Resources and Talent Acquisition, and the second being Human Resources and Learning Development. And both programs do fall under kind of the larger occupational cluster of business. So please take it away, Ben.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguanado, and members of the board. I'm Bindo, the Director of Research, Data Strategies and Effectiveness here at Calbright College and am honored to be here today to review Calbright's research and development findings, which consists of a comprehensive labor market information deep dive, including quantitative career scans and market studies. In support of those two new programs, Human Resources Talent Acquisition and Human Resources Learning and Development. These findings were identified through the discovery phase in alignment with the workforce-driven equity-centered community design framework that was previously shared in other sessions by Michael Younger. If we could go to the next slide. You'll see that on this slide, our current categorization of our occupational clusters include computer technologies, design innovation, knowledge economy, healthcare, as well as the newest cluster business that you see on the bottom here, where both the HR talent acquisition and HR learning development programs will reside. The next slide. So what I would like to do is spend a moment sharing the markets, market data and insights for the HR talent acquisition program first. Next slide, please. As the labor market continues to shift in light of these unprecedented times, the human resources industry must also continue to flex and adapt to the changing environment to ensure that businesses, both big and small, can really adequately provide meaningful job opportunities for current and future employees. The HR talent acquisition professionals are responsible for a number of different human resources functions, primarily recruiting, screening, interviewing, and placing the right individuals within an organization. These professionals can also specialize in compensation and benefit analysis to ensure meaningful and competitive compensation packages that will attract the best talent to their organizations. The demand for these careers are on the rise and it is estimated that by 2031, jobs in this space will grow approximately 11%, totaling close to 127,000 jobs in California by this time. On the next slide. So this map provides just a regional outlook within California and the number of job openings within that region for this specific occupation. Where you see the darker shades of blue, it indicates that there are higher volumes of jobs in this occupation. And while it's And while it's important for us to understand where these jobs are located, we also know that opportunities do not always have to exist where these jobs are located, but where there are large populations of individuals who want to be trained, but do not currently have the access to the right training opportunities. You'll see that, of course, Los Angeles, San Diego, Inland Empire, and the Bay Area on this map here are where currently there are robust opportunities. And they are in currently the more highly populated regions. And in the next slide. You'll see that as it relates to employment opportunities, there were over 107,000 jobs for HR talent acquisitions posted in California with a median salary range between 49,000 and 62,000 annually. However, what we found was that in the state of California, only roughly 1,374 certificates are earned annually from programs that train specifically for this occupation. That's nearly a 78 to 1 job posting to certificate earning ratio across the state. And when we looked closer into our focus regions, that ratio was actually 127 to 1 in the focus regions. When we, when we looked at the opportunity and the growth in our focus region, that's Capital, Inland Empire, and San Joaquin, we found that over the next decade, occupations in HR talent acquisition is actually expected to grow about 11% in the Capital Region, 19% in Inland Empire, and 13% in the San Joaquin Valley. We have some top employers in the state included, including University of California, Amazon, Elevent Health, Attico, and many more. In the next slide, you'll see that there are many common skills across multiple entry-level occupations within this career pathways. And skills such as communication is highly transferable to many different occupations within many different industries. Meanwhile, skills such as talent sourcing, recruitment, recruitment strategies can lead to a number of top occupations such as human resources generalists or talent acquisition specialists. This last slide for this program. You'll see that when it comes to equity and opportunity, we found that 8.2% of the incumbents in this occupation identified as Black or African-American. And further, nearly 19% of those who are currently employed in this occupation are approaching retirement age within the next 10 years. So we'll see a cycling of additional openings as employees who are currently there retire out. And Calbright programming presents just a great opportunity to not only expose students to these emerging careers in quality job, but to also assist with diversifying the industry, given our unique student demographics. Next slide. So we'll move on to our next program, which we would like to develop. This is the Human Resources Learning and Development Program. This exciting program will expand the offerings, again, in our business occupational sector. And our students will gain a better understanding of various elements of learning and development as part of a business strategy to help support organizations develop an environment within their organization that can reinforce positive employee experiences and retain talent in this shifting work environment. In the next slide, you'll see that HR talent and development is a unique career field that involves numerous skills that are highly transferable, again, across industries and sectors. According to a report by SHRM, we know that many organizations are shifting to a more learning and development-centric approach as an essential part of business strategic planning efforts. So skills such as cost management, planning, problem solving, really crucial to ensuring organizational success as it relates to people and retention strategies. It is estimated that within this occupation, it'll grow about 15% over the next decade and culminating to about 56,000 jobs in California by 2031. In the next slide, you see a similar kind of shading gradient map for the regional outlook for HR learning and development. The darker shades of blue again indicates just higher volumes of jobs within that particular region. And we see, once again, Los Angeles, San Diego, Inland Empire, as well as the Central Valley and this one in the Bay Area are areas where they contain robust opportunities and are populated regions of focus for us. Next slide. As it relates to opportunity, again, overall, we see that there are over 48,000 jobs for HR training and development specifically in California with median salary ranges between about 72,000 and 90, or I'm sorry, 61,000 annually. And again, looking at the number of certificates that are earned annually for programs that specifically train for this occupation, we see that there's only roughly 1,347 certificates. So that's nearly a 36 to 1 job posting to certificate earning ratio across the state. When we took a deeper dive into our regions of focus, that was 69 to 1 in those regions. Next slide. And as you can see here, common skills again across, they do cut across multiple entry-level occupations with career pathways in many different industries. So skills such as project management, planning, research skills do span within the government sector as well as IT engineering and can lead to careers in human resource assistance, training specialists, or even operations supervisors. And then this next slide. Equity and opportunity, like many other occupations, we always look at, you know, diversity in the workforce as an opportunity and evaluate this closely. With this particular occupation, we see that only 8.1% of incumbents identify as Black or African-American. And Calbright College really can help in thinking about how to expose students to this emerging cluster while also diversifying the talent pool and workforce. This is an opportunity for us to ensure these entry-level learning and development roles serve as a gateway into broader human resources, project management, and other areas within this field. And be able to train for increasing levels for responsibility and opportunities. Also, we see that this is an opportunity to replenish the field with diverse talent. Again, seeing that over 23% of those currently employed in this occupation are approaching retirement age within the next 10 years. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was really an excellent presentation. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of hands raised, so I'm going to go to Board Member Grande, and then we'll go to Haynes, and then we'll go to Aguanado.
Thank you, President Costa, and thank you so much for the information you've just presented regarding these two potential occupational pathways. I do have two questions, though, and the first one will relate to the second very closely. On the data slides that you presented with the number of job postings and the number of certificates awarded, is there an indication in those job postings that there's a preference for candidates with an earned certificate in the areas that are being proposed? And if so, do we have partnerships with the major employers with their promises of employment for our students who are earning these certificates?
Yeah, so when we, when we looked at the job postings in there, there is some filtering done to, in attempts to eliminate any job postings that require specifically a bachelor's degree, that's really, that's listed there. So we do try to narrow our focus into, you know, are these truly the entry-level occupations? Sometimes, you know, what we, what we can't always do is filter out completely to see if there's internal hiring practices or other requirements if they're not listed on the postings. As far as the certificates awarded, you know, when we, when we did the data scan and looked at the number of different certificates, what we did find was that for these HR occupations, often they are embedded into, encoded into the data systems in a broader category of business. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one, but we do take a look at that there. And Board Member Grande, in regards to just the, you know, looking at hiring and whether or not, you know, students will have a job. These are continuing conversations as part of our process that we do, you know, as part of our equity-centered approach here, and that we do engage with industry partners, advisories, to ensure that as we move forward in the design, that, you know, we attempt to align most closely with the actual hiring practices in the field. You know, not, there are few, I would say, employers who can guarantee, who would promise that they would hire students. But we do very intentionally work within the regions of focus and where we've identified to enable conversations with hiring managers and whatnot, so.
Thank you so much.
That's of course.
Thanks. I saw, Jita, you have your hand raised too. Did you want to respond to that before we move on to the other board members?
Oh, I think, I think Ben addressed it. I just mainly just, I heard Jolina's question to be asking the question about corporate placements and partners. And that's, that's not the model that we've gone forward with. So while the insight on what conditions hiring or best positions a candidate in the hiring market is where we tend to focus both the analysis and what is consistent with our operational model.
Thanks so much. And of course, that we give them transferable skills, which I love, right? So it's like, because I think, you know, and this is editorial comment, then I'll get to the board members. You know, when you're looking at labor market data, it's a lagging, it's a lagging indicator. So that makes that difficult. And I mean, I think the beauty of the Calbright model is that, you know, yes, we're talking about an HR professional, but it's like a choose-your-own-adventure. There's all these other pathways the skills lend themselves to. Anyway. With that, we have Pam, and then we have Hilton.
I guess I want to unfollow Jolina around the certificate piece of this and sort of ask the question. Sort of where? Is there a cluster? Is there some program in Southern California that offers more value relative to a certificate that will, that will lead to a job? Or is it sort of scattered across the state relative to smaller number? I mean, these are real small numbers, but I'm just trying to get an idea of where they may, where they, where are folks getting these certificates? Are they on community colleges, or is there, you know, a for-profit that is, you know, offering a program like this?
Yeah, so this data was not shown on the slide. But in the research that we conducted, there was actually, you know, of the numbers that you saw, I think it was slightly over 1,200. A majority or many of those certificates were awarded in the Southern California, LA, San Diego region. In San Diego, what we found was that many of those certificates were actually offered by a for-profit college that offered a bachelor's degree in this area. And so, you know, that, that was what the data was presenting. We did not actually see very many specific certificates issued or offered or awarded in the Central Valley or even the Bay Area. So that was an area, I believe, of opportunity for us to think about, how do we ensure that we are, you know, creating these opportunities for individuals within these localized regions to be able to gain access to these competencies and skills? Thinking about, you know, there are industry standards such as SHRM certifications that we are exploring and looking at to see if, you know, we can really map towards a program that would allow students to complete in a shorter amount of time, get those industry certificates, and then enter into the workforce without having to go to an alternative route, such as a for-profit in the region that they don't live in.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Or Member Aguanado.
Thank you very much, President Costa. First, thank you very much for this presentation. I think the fact that we're looking at these particular disciplines is very exciting because just the thought of talent acquisition, the thought of training our employees and leaning into their learning and development is so promising for our future. So I think this is a really good sign of where we're going. I'd like to land the third voice, the third set of questions around the same two slides. I think it's year slide six and slide 12. And I'm a little bit confused as to the numbers here, because if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, let's go to slide six, it's saying that there were 1374 certificates awarded in 2021. And then the number of job postings is estimated for 10 years from now. So can you just provide a little bit of clarity on, on the delta? Because if the job postings today are significantly lower than that, you know, how are these certificates and the advertising for these particular disciplines going to make up for the delta between those two numbers? And the same goes for slide 12, where you have, you have 48,367 job postings estimated for 10 years from now. So can you talk about those numbers a little bit with a little bit more granularity? And maybe talk about how the middle median salary, is that estimated for today? Is that 10 years from now? What's the timeframe around this?
Yeah, and I apologize if I misspoke or if this was unclear. So the numbers on this slide, so similarly to slide, this is slide 12 on slide six. The number that you see on the left here, these are the number of job postings for 2021. So it does align to the same year of the data that's posted across the board here. So in this one particular year, the data set that we found and when we scrubbed, there were 100, or here, the 48,000 jobs posted for training and development in California for that one year. In a previous slide, we did talk about a projection of the, you know, to 2031. And so, and those numbers, there's a variance, there is the delta that's shown or a projected number of increase for the jobs in those years. So that reflects the percent change that we noted. But here, it's 107,000 jobs for talent acquisition in California for 2021. The median rate, median salary are for those 107 jobs that were posted in that same year. The variance you see here is just between the 49,000 and the 62,000 is from region to region. So, so we wanted to capture not just a California average salary, but show the variance in the different salary ranges on the region here. And the 1374 are the number of certificates in that 2021 year.
So all of this data is 2021 data? And the projection on slide four and slide 10?
Correct.
Are adding on top of the 2021 data, of course?
It's, it's, it's the total projected by 2031. So here we see 126,000. So this is a growth of about 11%. And what that kind of calculates out to is that we're seeing about roughly a 20,000 additional jobs in the market that is projected to be posted by the 2031 year. So we expect to see, yeah, sorry.
It's probably worth also explaining, like, each of those data points contributes to our understanding in a different way. So we're both look at current production. We look at annualized opportunity to scope out the current size of the market. And we look at the prospects of the job or the field or the industry going forward. And so that's why it's on, that's why some of these facts are on different time horizons. Because to look at it dimensionally, in terms of understanding how the actions that we do today and the programs that we promulgate today will translate in terms of current opportunity, but also future opportunity becomes an important part of our calculus in deciding which programs make sense for our community.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam?
Thank you. I have a follow-up question with regard to the businesses that, is there sort of, is there a, is there a size that would, that would, that would be needing this? And what, and what's the, what's the, what's the word I want to use? Relative to California, which is huge, which is huge. But how, how, how does that, how does that kind of fit in? We use these wonderful terms like, you know, talent, you know, whatever that term is, the talent, looking for talent, but is this, it certainly isn't a mom and pop, or is it? Is it, is it because the industry is changing so much that we are talking about? Is it because the industry is changing so much that we are talking about really small businesses needing this kind of person in their shop in order to ma- to make it work? I just want to know what kind of businesses we're talking about.
Yeah, you know, so that is.
The business more than.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that is a really great question. And the data sources, of course, that we are finding, a lot of this information does reflect the larger scale businesses. And so, you know, when we were looking at some of the top employers, for instance, Amazon, Atico, Deloitte, all include, were included in some of this data set here. But what we know is that, you know, these specific skills and strategies don't always, they're needed across any businesses, whether it's small and large. You know, what we want to do is ensure that the program is developed in such a way that the skills reflect, you know, what are the skills that's needed to operate and potentially scale across any size business? So, you know, while we may, if we are looking at partnerships and looking at potential opportunities for engagement. You know, it would be benefit to our students potentially, you know, to be able to work with some of these larger companies. But bringing in the voices of mediums, small-sized businesses and understanding their needs would be also you know, an incredible learning opportunity and something that I believe would be advantageous to our students, because not everyone is going to work for Deloitte. Or, you know, the NSA, which is one of our top employers for the training and development cluster. But but, you know, students will need some of these skills and and any business will need to ensure in light of, you know, this time where we hear about the quiet quitting and quiet hirings. We have to, we have to ensure that we're, we're talking to anybody who does any hiring, whether you are a small business or not.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm just looking to see if there's any other board comments. I don't see any other hands raised. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
I see Gina has her hand raised, like a, like a teaching arm or something.
Apologies, it's, it's a micro moment, but the the micro comment that, one thing is that, that elusive that data point on firm mix in the economy disaggregated by particular job occupational category is like a very elusive and inconsistent data point to find. So we had that data point, for example, when we did CRM, where we knew that, I forget what percentage of something like, Ben, you might remember, it's like a almost eighty percent of firm-sized eleven employees or more had a role like this. But that was because that was private research that was done by the leading technology firm in the in setting those standards. And so we look for that data point often to really be able to understand the relative mix especially becomes important to us in a regional analysis. It's very difficult to to kind of find and source that kind of, that information.
Great, thank you. Any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Costa. President Costa, you're on, you're muted.
Oh, thanks, Terry. That's the end of our information reports. I see that we have no constituency group reports today. With that, I'll open up to any member of the public who wishes to be heard.
President Costa, there is no public comment, no raised hands.
Great. Well, with that, the business of the Executive Committee of Calbright College is now complete and we can adjourn. Thank you so much, everyone, for your participation.